Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Adam Strickland.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to call to order the August 7th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Strickland?
Here.
Vice Chair Biddle? Commissioner Brent Oliver?
Here.
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Corr? Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Neal?
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Public Statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on Madam Clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak.
Agenda, non-agenda item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the agenda, does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward, state your name. Seeing none.
Agenda item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for non-consent public hearing, item 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later time. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving consent item 4A?
Sir, move.
Commissioner Martin, do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Commissioner Kater, Madam Clerk, can you cast a roll call vote, please?
Chair Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Biddle, Corr, and Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 5, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for consent calendar public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open, at this time, I will open all of the consent calendar public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent calendar public hearing item? Seeing none, does any staff or commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar public hearing item? Seeing none, staff, I would like to remove item 5C from the consent calendar public
So moved.
Thank you. At this time, the consent calendar public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I move that we accept the consent calendar items 5A and 5B.
Second.
Four, okay, all right. That was quick, so thank you Commissioner Brent Oliver and Commissioner Martin. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call vote except on items 5A and 5B of the consent calendar public items?
Chair Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes to approve items 5A and 5B with Commissioners Biddle, Corr, and Neal absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next item, please.
Agenda item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I would like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be allowed to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing item, the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful to others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in concise and clear way. Staff, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to invite Associate Planner Veronica Martinez to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Veronica Martinez, and I'm an associate planner with the City of Bakersfield Development Services Department Planning Division. Agenda item 6A is a conditional use permit number 24-0021. The applicant, Michael Janins, is representing Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Fresno, is requesting approval to construct a food service facility and a storage warehouse on a 0.49 acre site, zoned C2 regional commercial. The project is located at 809, 825, and 827 Chester Avenue. Surrounding properties include a tax office to the north and south, a sign printing business and restaurant to the east, and the St. Francis Youth Center to the west. The general plan land use destination is general commercial, and the zoning classification is regional commercial. The proposal includes the construction of a new 4,690 square foot warehouse and a 5,012 square foot office building, providing critical support services to low-income and disadvantaged residents of Bakersfield. Services include food distribution to pre-qualified families and administrative assistance. The existing building on the southern portion of the site will remain and be incorporated into existing operations. No housing or overnight shelter is proposed or permitted under this permit. Architectural features include parrot pit walls, metal canopies, and smooth stucco finishes to maintain a modern commercial appearance. The site will be landscaped with plants and trees along Chester Avenue and Ninth Street to enhance the streetscape. No public opposition has been received for this project. Based on findings and conditions in the resolution, staff recommends that your commission approve conditional use permit number 24-0021. Thank you. Staff and applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you for your staff report. The public hearing on item 6A is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Also seeing none, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action.
I think this looks like a great project, Mr. Chairman. It's exciting and glad to see the work that the church is doing, and with that, I'd motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin.
I'd gladly second.
And I have a second from Commissioner Kater, so Madam Clerk, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Chair Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Biddle, Corr, and Neal absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please, which I believe is 5C?
5C.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and invite Andrea Murillo, Assistant Planner for Development Services Planning Department.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Murillo, and I'm an Assistant Planner with the Development Services Department. I'm here to present item 5C, which is the request for a conditional use permit 25-0010 for the development of a domestic water well and treatment system. The project is located on a .59 acre southeastern corner portion of approximately 11 acre Almondale Park along Verdugo Lane in northwest Bakersfield. The request is for a domestic water well, ozone treatment system, a GAC, which is Granular Activated Charcoal Treatment System, and an 85,000 gallon water storage tank. On September 13th, 2000, the city council approved zone change P99-0872 from R1 Single Unit Residential to OS Open Space. On July 30th, 2003, the city council approved general plan amendment 03-0394, changing the land use from LR Low Density Residential to Open Space Park OSP. On August 26th, 2004, a site plan was approved for Almondale Park. And although smaller in scale, the well site was identified on that plan and in the exact same location as presented today. The portion of the project site is current, a portion of the project site is currently a basketball court. That court will be reoriented east-west, parallel to the well site. A six-foot masonry wall will encompass the well site, and along Verdugo Lane, a 15-foot landscape strip will provide additional screening. Gravel or concrete will surface the entire site, and no restrooms or vehicular or equipment storage is proposed. The applicant has been diligent in considering the neighbors, the neighboring residents' concerns, and after discussion, has re-lodicated the project to the proposed location. No public comment has been received in response to the public hearing notice for this meeting. Staff recommends approval of the request for conditional use permit 25-0010. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. The public hearing for item 5C is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Steph Tezias, and I'm the Director of Planning and Construction for North of the River Recreation and Park District. We have worked on this project with the neighborhoods and with the Jaspar, representing Von Water Company now for quite a few years in accommodating the request for the well site. This is, the proposed location was in response to two neighborhood letters that we had put out within a quarter-mile radius of the park site, and understanding that the impact to the park would be the basketball court, as you see here, moving it to east to west. We do have as part of the, as part of the response to it. So the conceptual rendering that you see presented here was presented to the neighborhood as part of the second letter that went out within the quarter-mile radius. And as you can see on this site plan, the basketball court is reoriented at the east-west and will be replaced within the park site and some enhanced landscape improvements on the wells, around the well site, not shown on the original plan. So the park site itself will be improved above and beyond what's already existing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Curtis Skaggs with the Jaspar and Associates. We're the design engineer for the well site for Von Water Company, and just wanted to indicate how important the well is to Von Water. This is an area of their system, the very far northeast corner of the system, where pressures are low periodically, and so having additional water supply in this region of the system will help improve pressures for the community, which is what we're after. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would wish to speak in favor of the project? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step forward, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Seeing none, and since I pulled it out, I'll ask the questions. I think the first question is going to be probably for the design engineer, although it may be a joint question for anywhere, North of the River as well. When designing the layout for the basketball court, it's tough to ask a question without comment, so for context, a constituent reached out with concerns for the location, mainly using the basketball court during the day as it faced east and west. That'll be half the day directly in one view of sunlight, half the day in the view of the other sunlight. So in doing this design plan, was there ever a consideration for keeping the basketball court in its north-south orientation on the park grounds?
Sure. That, we played with it, and I can say that I was, I was the one that designed it. We played with it, and if we were to move, keep it north and south, it becomes closer to the street, so that becomes more of a hazard from a play standpoint and perhaps a vehicular pedestrian conflict. To accommodate the east-west orientation, the trees on the west side of the parking lot that are on that concept are proposed to be larger in size to accommodate greater shade that will happen, and obviously, trees do grow, to block some of that afternoon sun that does radiate down on the west side.
And so, question, yes. Do we know what the initial size of those trees from height-wise perspective are going to be when installed, or are these going to be short trees that we expect in 20 years to be sufficient?
So we're looking at a 24 to 36 inch box, so they're going to be anywhere to, from, you know, depending on the species, we'll do a faster-growing species, possibly 15 feet in height.
Okay.
And they'll have a bigger canopy than what you would see in a 15-gallon tree, which is typically understood as a stick in the ground.
Sure, sure, yeah. And in doing that analysis of maybe moving it closer to the road, I think that's pretty good, but I could be wrong, did it look into maybe enclosing the courts to mitigate that risk, so moving them slightly closer to the road, but enclosing them so they're not open court?
Sure, that's a really good question. Typically, North of the River Recreation and Park District does not fence in basketball courts, because there's a perception that you feel congested or, I guess claustrophobic from that standpipe, and there's a connotation that comes with that, and there also is an increased cost. So deviating from what our district standard is by fencing it in, that was not a consideration. What we, what we, what we are doing is buffering the east-west court with more plant material to reduce that east-west conflict. The north-south one also conflicts with some of the irrigation, existing irrigation meter and booster pump. It gets very close to the underground infrastructure that is there if we were to shift it over and continue to do it north and south.
Okay. All right, cool. And then I guess probably final question for North of the River is, within the assets of parks for basketball courts, would this be the only basketball court in the system that goes east-west? Because I looked through North of the River site earlier today for the matrix, and it looks like every park in Bakersfield is north-south except for this one. Is that a deviation from standard for North of the River?
It's a best-fit scenario. Yes, we try to stay away from east-west. There's some that are more northwest, southwest, or southeast oriented. I want to say that there is, and I'm not quite sure, potentially the courts at North Rosedale Park, the half-courts that are in there could be facing east-west as well. But yes, no different than baseball fields having a proper orientation or an orientation that is more desirable. We do try to maximize the recreation ability or recreation amenities within our parks, and this is continuing to hold the basketball court within the park.
Understood. Thank you. I think that's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other commissioner have any questions for the public? Comments later, yeah. Seeing no more, I'm going to flip my page and pretend I'm not trying to read. I will now close the public hearing on the item and return it to commission for comment and action.
Okay. First of all, this is very needed, I can attest to that, and thank you for at least paying attention to the desirability of the use of that basketball court, and I'm really glad you explained all that, so I'm really glad you brought it up. But as a builder in that area, I've been told a few times, no, you can't have a water meter, because we can't get you water. So obviously, this is super important, and I was actually just commenting to Daniel earlier, or Commissioner Kater, sorry, that I couldn't believe this wasn't ministerial because we need it so badly, so I'm in favor.
Any other comments?
I concur.
But that's not a motion. Concurring's not a motion, that's just a, okay. I just wanted to make a small comment. When I reached out, again, a constituent reached out and asked, hey, you know, concern about playability on the field from what they saw on the board packet, and in the presentation, I agree, right? I don't play basketball, if you can believe it, I don't have to build for it, but I wouldn't have thought about it when I reviewed this last week, that this is an east-west issue, right? But it's a good, it's a good concern to bring up, and I reached out to the planning staff, mentioned that we pulled this, talked about it, and staff provided the landscaping plan that was shown on the presentation today that shows the shade coverage, and I'd just like to raise maybe a concern or frustration that, to me, that should be in the packet for something like this, because I think maybe a constituent seeing, sure, it's going to be east-west, but we're going to have 15-foot trees day one or approximately day one, may have alleviated that concern, and I think we see that somewhat consistently. If we've got more information, I don't think this plan does a good idea of showing the orientation, the development plan, how long the court's going to be down. I don't know if we're giving the public full visibility into the project we're talking about, and then we're asking the commission to approve it, and if we approve it, it's done deal and it goes forward. So I would just ask in the future, if there's supporting documents, landscaping plans, anything that supports the project be included in the packet? Because I think that probably makes a lot easier conversation with the constituent to say, yes, we understand east-west, but if you look at the plan, you know, this will be a really shaded site. You know, I'll raise a similar comment, you know, when we look at playing, believe it or not, I play flag football, I've got the build for that. So when we look at parks in the area for North of the River, we do look at, yeah, hey, Emerald Cove has tons of shade, it's great. It's great to play when it's hot because the sun's blocked. Polo, maybe not so much, because there's less tree coverage. So showing that in the plan, I think, would help a lot. So that was just my overall comment, and I will defer back to my colleagues for a motion, maybe?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6A.
Commissioner Brent Oliver?
So moved.
Commissioner Martin?
Was it 5C?
It's 5C now. It's 5C.
5C. I make a motion to approve 5C.
All right.
I'll second.
Commissioner Martin? Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote on item 5C?
Chair Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes to approve agenda item 5C with Commissioners Biddle, Corr, and Neal absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Agenda item 7, Reports.
I think item 7A is the 2024 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, so staff, will you please provide your report?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and ask, well, here we have Development Services Director Phil Burns, who would like to speak on this agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we're going to have a report for you on our housing element, but I thought I'd make a few kind of entry comments. You know, we've had this ongoing saga with HCD, and kind of want to give you an update kind of where we are, and first of all, yes, we do have to do an annual report, even though we don't have approved housing element. That's kind of the first point. Second is our fourth round of submitter went to HCD on July 10th. HCD has 60 days to reply back to us, so hopefully before September 8th, we'll have an answer, are we good to go or not. I do really feel that we should be in a good place this round. We've had a couple comment sessions with staff from HCD regarding the kind of last round of comments, to kind of work through them ahead of time, so I feel that we'll get across the board this time. With the 60 days, that means about September 8th, and then we'll need to move it forward back to the commission for its action on the housing element and then to council. So what that really looks like is October, back to this, this group, and then to city council, then most likely first part of November. Some of the latest items we had to do are just in the housing element, were to expand actions to promote housing mobility, reduce displacement, and support place strategies. We had some program refinements related to geographic targeting and increasing metrics, incorporating feedback from commenters in our housing mobility strategies. Bottom line is, we're to a point where we've had so many programs, we're now in a situation with a budget that's, that's city budget that's not in the best place. I really hope this gets across the finish line, because I'm actually concerned that with those budget constraints, we're going to have a hard time actually fulfilling the commitments we have in the housing element. With that, then I'm going to hand this over to Louis Ramirez to provide your report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Louis Ramirez. I'm an associate planner with the Development Services Planning Division, and I'm here to present the City of Bakersfield's 2024 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. This presentation will highlight our progress towards meeting our regional housing needs allocations and key implementation milestones from our housing programs. Tonight's presentation will cover the following, a quick overview of what the annual progress report entails, the process we follow for the APR submission, a summary of our RENA targets, and the 2024 housing production, and a look at how we're moving forward. APR is a tool required by the State of California that tracks a jurisdiction's progress in implementing its housing element. It includes data on housing production by income category, program implementation, and other policy outcomes. This report helps maintain transparency and keeps Bakersfield eligible for important funding programs. Cities are required to submit the APR to both the State Housing Community Development Department and the Office of Planning and Research by April 1st each year. This, the report is formatted using a standardized Excel spreadsheet and includes both quantitative data and narrative components explaining how the housing element programs are being implemented. The regional housing needs allocation is a state-mandated housing planning tool. It is not a requirement to build a certain amount of housing, but cities must demonstrate that how, that they have planned and zoned adequate, adequately for housing across income categories. The Bakersfield Six-Cycle RENA covers a period from the years 2024 to 2032 with a total of 37,461 dwelling units across all income levels. 2024 marked the first year of the six cycle. While some progress was made, production and/or identification of very low and moderate income housing continues to be a challenge. This highlights the importance of our policy tools and partnership moving forward. In 2024, Bakersfield permitted 1,776 dwelling units, with nearly all of them in the above moderate income category. Production of very low and moderate income housing was zero, and only 88 units were permitted for low-income households. and only 88 units were permitted for low-income households. This leaves a significant gap in affordable housing. Overall, we've completed 4.7% of our RENA target. To sit, to stay on track, we now need to permit about 5,900, 5,094 units per year, with a strong focus on very low, low, and moderate income levels. This highlights the urgency of accelerating affordable housing development. Even though our numbers did not meet the RENA target, the California Department of Finance had press, had a press release distinguishing Bakersfield as the fastest-growing amongst the 10 largest cities in California, growing at a rate of 1.16%. It also had the City of Bakersfield ranked within the top five cities in California for net housing gain. Bakersfield has experienced strong, balanced growth, leading major cities in population increase, and focusing heavily on single-family residential development. The draft housing element currently being, the draft housing element currently being reviewed by HCD includes 109 program actions. Since the element is still underway, many of these programs are in the early stages. However, we've made significant progress in a few areas. Zoning updates to increase affordable housing capacity, collaboration with developers and nonprofits, securing funding such as the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and transformative climate community grants, grant. Um, we'd like to highlight a few completed projects. The Alaven Apartments on F Street, uh, they provide 126, um, units, uh, which include 36 for former foster, foster youth, um, which also includes supportive services. Uh, the second that was completed was the College Heights Cotages that, uh, provide, that will provide 80, 28 units with 14 permanent supportive housing units for the very low-income residents. Additional projects are under development and expected to provide more affordable units in the coming years. These will be essential to meeting our RENA goals and providing housing for underserved, the, for underserved populations. For example, the Let's Ring Senior Housing will provide 150 senior units, affordable for those earning between 30 to 80% of the annual median income. And the Auburn Vista Apartments, which will provide 60 units targeted for low-income farmworkers. Um, and again, this project is currently under construction and will be completed, um, by 2026, expected to be completed by 2026. In summary, Bakersfield continues to make progress on its RENA goals, but like many jurisdictions, faces challenges in producing very low and moderate income housing. We'll continue to focus on affordable housing strategies, implementation of the housing element programs, and removing barriers for, to housing development. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide clarification on the material. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm always a little confused on this. I think it's just open comments question. So, Commissioners, any questions for staff regarding presentation for the 2024 Housing Element Progress Report? Commissioner Martin?
When you said that we're the fastest-growing of the top 10 California cities, and what, uh, and what context, we're the fastest-growing in affordable income, that we're meeting our RENA goals, and, and what, and what capacity are we the fastest?
The Department of Finance, um, put out a press release, and when they say 10 largest cities, it's by population. Uh, Bakersfield is currently the largest city in California.
Right, I understand that. But, so, it's not some subset of housing that we're number, that we're, you know, the largest in growth in, not some specific type of housing. Just your, that comment you made earlier, that statistic, is you're just talking about as a population as a whole, we're growing faster than any other top 10 city?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. And thank you for the presentation.
I had a question. Um, there's been a lot of work about, um, different state bills, different, um, dividing small lots into multiple homes, ADUs. I was just wondering if there's been data collected on where those additional units fall on the, uh, income strategy? Is that, do they all fall into the above moderate, or do they add to our low-income housing numbers?
Currently, we're developing tools to identify those income levels. Um, specifically to ADUs, those are considered low-income, um, per state definition.
And we're collecting data on what, so will those be seen in the future years' numbers?
That, that data is, um, available on the current and previous APR that's, um, have been pre-added. Thank you.
Commissioner Brent Oliver?
You just said that, or can I clarify? You said that all ADUs are, are considered low-income? Just any permit pulled as an ADU is considered, to check the box in the category?
They're considered a part of the low, the low income based upon the, um, annual median income, um, from the cit, the, from, associated to the, uh, the state. The state, because of the size, is limited to 1,200 square feet. Um, yes, it's considered low-income based upon the size of, of the ADUs.
Okay. Um, which is, doesn't make any sense to me, because, I mean, I build them in, you know, multimillion-dollar neighborhoods. Anyway, um, so, I have another question about, oh, sorry.
Okay, Nina Principal Planner. So, we just got confirmation that the ADU, uh, when we look at it as, the definition is for the detached ADU. Anything that's attached is not considered to be the low-income.
Okay, makes sense. Still doesn't really make sense, but anyway. Um, I mean, I'm glad. I'm really glad. That just helps us. It helps our numbers. Um, my question was about, I think I saw on the agenda today for the housing meeting that I tried to attend and my schedule didn't permit. Um, there was some sort of grant program or some sort of application about ADUs and how, if you were able to house someone or rent, that you could get a grant to help pay for some of that? Is that correct?
Commissioner Brent Oliver, yes, that, that's correct. Uh, in the Housing and Community Development, uh, meeting yesterday, we had an item trying to develop a, um, program using PLHP, P, PLHPA, uh, money to, uh, both fund new ADUs. But, really, our focus this round is, we have so many that were built unpermitted, and we're trying to go into disadvantaged communities, use this grant opportunity with a five-year, um, forgiveness clause. So, long as the rental, renter that's in the unit, we could use the funds, prove that the renter is, meets the AMI, 60% AMI, then that loan would be forgiven. But, it's, again, we're really trying to focus on those disadvantaged communities where we have, we've already identified 38 through code enforcement. We're working through qualifications of that program. So, they're really, we're trying to get units, and those would be legitimate low-income units, for sure.
And so, you're marketing to those people, essentially? Like, you're targeting them?
That is correct. But, we are, we're putting the framework in so we could, we could use the program long-term, or, you know, if we have other funds or the grants, to expand it to build new ADUs. But, we know through our, a lot of our work with our housing element, uh, that we have a lot of substandard, uh, buildings in especially southeast Bakersfield. And we're really trying to focus on habability for those, those units.
And do those have to be individually owned, or can they be owned by a corporation or nonprofit?
Great question. Our program, as established, we've got to be the, a owner occupied in either the ADU or the main unit. So, if it is a rental from out of town or in, in city, you would not be eligible for that program.
Well, I, I had a couple of questions. Just at the very beginning of the presentation, you said that city budget constraints could impact HCD updates if that's not approved. Could you just high-level some of those concerns?
Uh, some of the concerns is, is, again, we have 109 programs within the housing element that do numerous items. And to, at a high level, to, to manage a program, you have to have staff that does that. So, if there are, at some point, reductions in staff levels, we're not gonna have people to manage those programs, let alone actually fulfill whatever the obligation is.
Understood. Okay, thank you. And then, just a question. Can we go on the presentation, a couple of slides into this, and this may be the annoying bit where I keep saying no. There was a slide that had percentages of houses built, and that one, yeah. This, so, I just wanna say, this was probably more helpful for me seeing this today than the staff packet for, uh, as a consultant myself, I'm now brain-rotted to where I need an executive summary and a table telling me if it's good or bad, right? And then, all the other tables are great, but they don't contextualize the data for me. They're just data. So, this, this was helpful to look at. Um, I had a couple of questions on this. From the staff's perspective, 88 units to date of low income, and, you know, 95% of the remaining houses are above moderate. Is that a concern for the city, that we're so far off our RENA goals and, uh, percentages are so disparate?
Okay. Uh, it's, it's not a concern because it's been a trend. Uh, it was like this last year and the year before, prior to. Well, we have always had trouble, um, identifying of very low, low, moderate, um, affordable housing. And, um, the new housing element helps us provide tools to better identify some of these projects, uh, based off of income and census.
Yeah, and, and I don't necessarily mean concern that we are falling outside of our normal, or, I, I, more of, if we go six years into the future and keep those trends, we're never gonna come close to helping provide housing to those who need it most.
Commissioner Strickland? Let's, let's just cut to the chase. The, the numbers are unrealistic to start with.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so, uh, we know that we have never built that many units. We're trying to do everything we can to get there.
Sure.
And there are a lot of affordable units in, you know, in the pipeline.
Sure.
Uh, Economic Community Development Department is doing a wonderful job trying to bring projects together.
Right.
But, uh, the numbers that are in our, uh, RENA, we know that they're unattainable, but we're, we're gonna do everything we can to get there.
Okay, great. Yeah, and, yeah, I think we talked about this two years ago when some of those numbers came out, where it wasn't gonna happen. I, um, I think that's all the questions I had. I appreciate the presentation. Um, thanks for, thanks for that, and look forward to the next one, I think that was in October. Uh, Ms, Commissioner Kater is gonna continue, so I'm gonna shut up.
I'm so sorry. I thought you were gonna, I didn't know you were closing out till right now. Sorry. Um, just a couple of questions. I think these annual check-ins are really helpful because it kind of shows where we started to where we're heading. And I was curious if, um, because interestingly, if you look at this chart, which I agree with Commissioner Strickland, it's very helpful to have, um, something very complex presented in something not very complex. Um, but it looks like above moderate, we're pretty close to reaching our target in that category. Um, none of the other categories, which suggests that we don't really have a great mechanism to provide less than above moderate housing. So, I'm curious, um, as we look each year reflectively back, are, is the city learning lessons? Are we finding things? Um, because to me, like, the concern I hear is, we, we're always presented with these sort of marquee, low-income housing projects that take four years to build and provide important, but a relatively small number of housing units. And are, are there other tools or mechanisms being learned? Because I know, like, I'd be curious if information's being tracked as far as, um, like, are, are timelines to approve projects going down? Are, um, like, I know the housing element had a pretty controversial, um, change in how zones can be conditionally approved for housing. Like, are some of those things being reassessed and evaluated as we move through this process?
Yes, but it, it is, it is complicated because you, you have many assembly bills, state bills that have also went into, to play. I will say, our staff hasn't had the time to really digest all those changes. Um, we are constantly working with Economic Community Development. I, I wish Jenny Byers or someone from that team was here tonight to really talk more about the programs. But, like the ADU example, we're trying to find ways, how do, how do we find affordable units, especially the, the low-hanging fruit, to get those, those addressed. Um, some of the other items is to really qualify, right now, we need deed restrictions. For the moderate income, and, um, we're not asking that information, and, or can we, as a building permit, uh, permit, because it's a ministerial permit. So, if they don't want to provide information, they don't have to. So, those are kind of probably harder to, for us to track without having some sort of deed restricted project, or something in the state definition that says this is an affordable project. So, there's those kind of multiple issues that kind of play into this. That kind of answered the question, I think.
Kind of. I think it's an ongoing conversation, and I think it's good to reflect back, because I think, um, yeah. But, I appreciate those comments.
But to add, I think, uh, we've already brought to you some re-zones. So, you're looking at R4 zones, MX1, MX2. So, those, by definition, may allow development or, or multifamily dwelling units that are built in those zones to be counted toward these gaps. So, that's what we're gonna be looking at as, to build those tools going forward. But, you should be seeing some of these gaps, uh, reduced and, and filled in.
Just thank you for the update. And Commissioner Strickland, I will, sorry to, uh, usurp your closing statements, and I will...
No, I appreciate it. I had a whole speech planned, but now I don't need it. Uh, thank you, staff. Um, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 8, Communications.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, we have a...
Oh, um, I, I will ask for a motion to receive and file staff report?
Motion to receive and file.
Commissioner Martin?
I second.
Commissioner Brent Oliver? Um, Madam Clerk, may we get a roll call vote?
Chair Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Biddle, Court, and Neil absent.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Agenda item 8, Communications.
Does staff have any communication items?
Yes, Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. We will be having a August 18th meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 9, Commissioner Comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 10, Adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned August 7th, 2025 at 6:17 PM.